Um, yeah.
You are extra gold.
I think you're right. You're not if you want to. Um, all right. I'm sure that wasn't possible.
I didn't do, I need to. I tell you all, don't go to the high school. I didn't know the question. No, and then.
I have a question.
Yes, no.
If my kid would be somewhere at three for the tryout, but normally gets on a bus, what do I tell her?
Where's the bus goes to high school? Um, keep her with me.
When?
That's true. You better go on the bus.
Like that one I need to tell her until her teenager.
Yes.
Go to the gym.
Give them?
Yeah.
And show them when they call 455 bus records, you better go on the bus. And then I'll have her until four.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll be here. I'll be here then.
Yeah, she'll come with me. I'll let her know.
But I want to make sure I don't know where to go.
Here's the packet. It's an original, so it's. Don't write on it.
Oh.
The original, don't write on it.
Don't write on those. You're using more.
That you can write on.
Right, we'll be in charge because I have a hand over it today. Here's a, don't write on this. I just say it was like someone else. It's got a pencil all over it.
Well, that's her. That's where she writes.
That's what. So it's how you get it, huh?
No.
Oh, the whole packet.
I'm the middle school record.
Did you get your email? Again, the email of the whole.
And I'm like, look, there's the word.
This is, we have all the kids with you though, right?
Yes.
I've got the digital copy.
Well, the marketing.
It's full of.
And you have questions. Girl with it.
This is a scene.
Yeah.
I'm like people.
I tried it on you.
You want, you want to wear like when you go this is.
We're gonna make a motion that Jeffy part where. I forgot, I was sitting in my, sitting next to my. Well, I could just wear those. You gotta, you gotta close. Just put it right there.
If you were Iron Man.
Yeah.
Oh, that's great.
Now turn to your right.
Yeah, because you have the extra.
You're real fat. She wants one.
It really wants to.
I gave it one last week.
Never a format.
That is now.
Sorry, I'm a Wikipedia.
How long?
Triple A.
Does everyone want one?
You can, you can trade one copy if you want.
Triple A, each. Is it, is there a difference between the?
I'm just having a camera.
If they're so far back.
Um, I would say wash it, not wash it. Okay.
That's it.
That is a side from detail.
Uh, you have it already?
I, I do have extra.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, no, I don't want to.
Yeah, I gotta, see, I need to peg my, I need to peg my pants. Remember that look? You peg them like that, roll them. I need to do that.
That's all it's like right there.
Yeah.
It's only on our floor. In a star. Like, um, one that's like rather than.
You would have been.
Okay, I'm waiting. I was waiting. I just.
I am printing mine out of the dark and then I'm just sitting on black and circuitry.
Well, they're more. Yeah.
The way you think of what, I mean, when I was a kid, he stuffed. That one is.
Hurry up, man. Good job, man.
Everybody gets one. Next student is considering life after class. Please my cool.
I know, there you go.
Yeah. Things beautiful. Classic. Yeah. Joy. I feel like Christmas. Uh, has them real. So your painting is so big. So there's a long wall. Always. Uh, wire. I like that.
I would welcome that, but I need to sign my way.
So this wall over here, the long wall. And actually, there's no railing on it, so I wouldn't. Yeah. We'll meet him for that side.
Oh, really?
This text. Like you can't. We also. You know how it happened. Burden. It's like giveaway. Got that form. Yeah.
I'm in for that one.
You're in for the.
No, who's birthday do I need to know?
Are they saying Brad? Uh, the whole thing is. Uh, professional.
Oh.
The star. We think it's not, and the guy's gonna have masks on this side, so. I thought it was masks on this side. I hope this is streaming. It is. Yes. Right.
We have the opinion black one.
That's right. We're, we're, yeah, I know. Triple A community, we're, we're happy that ninety's slang is coming back. We still got one man.
Have we heard from Dr. Riley?
Uh, she's in route. She was also going to the high school, so the rest of us are both coming. I haven't heard from her. From, I don't know why. Everybody got quiet. Soon as he says we're streaming. Yeah, everybody shut up. Uh, we have Bonnie. Bonnie is on the.
Hi, Bonnie.
Hello.
Hey, Bonnie, how you doing?
Good. How's everyone?
We are doing all right.
Oh, that's a good thing.
So we've got a forum. Do you want to wait for the show or something? You guys starting? Okay, I will go ahead and call to order then and take roll call. Let me start with the side of the table.
Emily Kaiser.
Jeff Honeycutt. Okay, that gives us four of seven, which is a big forum. Uh, Dr. Kara Riley and Resto Roberts are both in route, so they'll be doing it a little bit later, but they are on their way here. Let's go ahead and stand for the pledge of allegiance. Where is the flag closest to us?
Get down.
Come on. Pretend it's there. Sorry? Oh, hey, the flag, we know. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All righty. So district update, district update attachment number one. Is somebody walking us through this?
So I will. Um, what I wanted to do is, um, moving forward is to provide you with sort of overarching district update. To kind of give you a little insight into what each department area is doing for the past month and, um, so everyone's working on ownership of their area. Um, just a sort of general update. Um, we have had one early release day that was very successful in twelve. Um, that we had teachers collaborating on to arts integration. We've got two more dates. Actually, we have three more dates upcoming, one of which is during, uh, a teacher work day. So we have two more early release days scheduled. Um, one in November and the one in May. Um, currently I'm working with the administrators on really finding and developing arts pathways for the high school. So entering into ninth grade, students are going to sort of identify with the pathway and then take advanced coursework, so they have opportunities to see sort of what that looks like if they continue on a certain strand.
So that pathway aligns certain subject.
So we will have pathways in drama and theater and creative writing and culinary and dance, all of the arts with our two other programs. So, so kids can, when they enter it, they can kind of see sort of tracking mechanism, what that looks like if they stay with that pathway. Um, that really aligns to our vision of providing them advanced coursework in the arts. So we're looking at that, that as they define what that looks like. Um, administrators and teachers are also now working on every flag, which is teacher evaluation process, so that's terrific. We're going ahead with that. Nish is getting the classrooms with observed teachers and within a growth model, so the whole focus of this is providing teachers with feedback on what they're doing great and ways to continue to improve. Um, and every like this sort of a statewide system that every school and district uses, um, it's got a lot of embedded resources in there as well.
This is new for us.
This is new for us, but this aligns with what other districts are doing, so every teacher feels like they've got, um, some opportunities to have people see what the great things they're doing, their administrators can get back. Um, we, administrators and I, along with, um, technology Victor sat down and really looked to analyze all of the online programs that our district currently is using and trying to determine what our best expenditure models are for those. We're really looking at making sure that we're not double, triple using programs that, um, that one would survive. So we're continuing to look at to streamline that, that expenditure down and give a, um, pick out the best functional programs for each grade level. Um, the new website, logo refresh.
Are we also evaluating the apps that are used for communicating with parents between teachers and the?
We are evaluating. In fact, um, some of our, and I'm happy to share that overall spreadsheet if you're interested, some of the contracts are up for renewal, which is kind of what's part of this conversation. Um, to see if we're making sure we're using the best mechanism. So, for example, we've been using one particular program for, um, systems alert or some kind of crisis model. And we're reviewing some other options because that will also, we have needs that were not being met with the process we're using now. So, um, I'm happy to share that and let you guys feel if you're wanting to sit in on any of the conversations, just letting that.
You don't have to be.
Are we calling our community meeting, our faculty and our parents to get their feedback on what's working and what's not working as far as, um, art communication methods? Have we done that yet? We are in the. We are, sorry. We are in the process of sending out some surveys. It's a conjunction with Department of Education and High Reliability Schools, Global One, which is a safety collaborative culture, a culture. Um, and those, those surveys will indicate where our gaps are. We've also been, especially at the high school, really utilizing some of the e-school aspects that haven't been used before as far as attendance certifications and things like that. So we are really working on trying to increase, uh, our communications in multiple different formats. But, um, that community feedback is essential, especially if we're not reaching certain individuals. Um, we want to make sure that they're closing all of our apps, so yes.
I just know that between the two campuses and the different, like, there's so many different apps that are used.
Yes.
For communication, um, I mean, like there's my stooge or reply and banned, uh, Google. And then even like for scheduling, guaranteeing appointments is something we're using. Google means talent piece of, I'm trying to see if we can get to like a uniform, um, way of communicating on single app district line.
Yes, you're exactly right. And the goal is like an easy, simple system. Um, technology is also helping to make sure that we've got our clever, you guys know what clever is, is kind of a mainframe. Um, so when teachers or kids log on, that, that is, uh, a place where all of the apps that they use for their instructional process or school-wide functionality is on there and it's just interesting to click it. So they're really working to help streamline for effective teacher instruction as well as student access. So we are really focusing on cleaning up and shoring up all of these, um, local issues. Um, the website is about to launch. Um, I've been working with App to G, our host, on that, really making sure that we make our website user friendly. And we may get where you can log on pretty much easily, find things that you need quickly and then things that are sort of less important, they're underneath, um, the white areas that they're not taking up so much space. So that should be, um, need to go very shortly. Um.
Can I also be part of the review in the website?
Sure.
This is part of what I do professionally, so I would like to.
So let's schedule a time where you can come in and we'll look at it together.
That'd be great.
I think you'll be very pleased. Um, we've done a lot of work trying to make it better. Um, and then, um, we've got some new signage at the administrative office coming in along with the logo refresh, and we've also got signage coming in here for this building. Um, I think really moving forward, I'm really interested in developing sort of a PR marketing team to help us sort of tell our story a little bit better, get our information out there. That I would love for you to participate, um, if you know, community volunteers would really love to have that. Um, in consult, consultation with Department of Education, I'm looking at, looking at CTE, current technical education pathway for our culinary department. And with that comes some state funding and some of the conversation, how we can build that program now, so kids at the end of taking a sort of sequential amount of classes can get a certification like the link that I did to work my support. Um, and that certification is really important because they're probably like, they can like choose their location and have that type of. Say, even though they'll get paid more. Not really the kids have that type of. Yeah, I want to just forward the. And we have a great facility already in place at the high school. It's just, and we've got, um, some, a new individual, we'll discuss in a minute. Um, we're ready to really expand that. And then last but not least, um, we are encouraging you, if you have time to drop into the schools, visit, stop in for lunch, whatever your time allows, um, we'd love to have you witness the great stuff. I'm gonna let you progress through if you have any questions. They just kind of gave each department, gave you an update. This will be consistent for every month and they'll just update it with new things that have happened in the meantime. Um, but if you have any questions, you should tell me now. Athletics is here to talk, um, a little bit.
I have a question. There's a note about started using cafeteria again for sixth grade?
Yes.
Why was it?
So the cafeteria was closed down for COVID.
Okay.
And, um, we, we wanted to start slowly rolling out its opening. It's a very strategic one. We picked sixth grade.
You're just phasing the class.
Phasing and slowly to see how that works, um, and being very mindful of one class at times where they stay in their homework groups, being very cautious. With that introduction back into the cafeteria, we also are reducing the styrofoam waste. This currently was so much styrofoam, we were getting added extra fees for our dumpster because it was exceeding the amount and we weren't able to close the lift. We were getting charged extra. So it's a cost benefit fact of us opening that, but we also want it, it's moving and out of their classroom and kind of back into some little bit of more space, getting teachers a little bit more time, planning, adopting in the classroom. I, I thought that it wasn't any big deal, but I have a sixth grader and I thought, oh, you need the classroom in school, right? And they love going back to the cafeteria. Who knew? Like, that's all I talk about. You have to go to the cafeteria to them. I do want to say on this elementary, like, on behalf of all of us, a whole week. Uh, thank you to all of our teachers who put in two weeks of parent-teacher conferences recently, so we really appreciate that. Um, we know that it was a long day, but I think it's really important to make that community connection. That's, thank you to all of you guys, all the work you put in to make that go smoothly. It was a lot.
Yeah, we secondary to that as well, right?
Yes, they did.
Yeah, huge, huge kudos. Thank you.
And they were very flexible to all of us. ISBN is where I had to go and switch some from in-person to, uh, online and then, you know, having to get some updates via email in some cases. So it was, it was amazing the teachers, the way that they managed that. So yeah, definitely appreciate that.
Well, and just, just like you guys mentioned, this is, I really appreciate being able to attend those. I mean, it's so incredibly important for parents to have that interaction with the teachers and understand where your students at. So thank you, those parents that, um, were able to attend.
I love that at the high school that they're offering the get a clue dinner theater show in that in lieu of what has traditionally been the haunted house or. That's what I meant to.
Haunted houses. They are planning it now. So it'll be a quick turnaround in the comments.
Okay, cool. They're, they're working hard to do that production.
Is that the get a clue? Is there, is it just open for the students and parents? Are they able to invite other family members?
Yes, so they're actually selling tickets.
The tickets are going fast, so if you want them, like, you should have already gotten them, but shout out to everybody listening. Get your tickets now.
So we're doing two standard like dinner theater, our culinary department, basically if it's an arts class, it's involved in the production. So the culinary folks are, are making food, um, they're running test recipes right now, it's gonna be good. Uh, so we're doing two traditional, um, performances with dinner theater, and then we're gonna do a matinee for students who want to stay after school and not, not go through the full regalia night. And it's, and it's an extra, frankly, dress rehearsal that gets, gets an audience there before the actual.
I, I honestly am amazed with this event because you're putting together an entire evening that showcases so many different things that we do at the school. You're, we're not, you know, asking somebody to come and cater it, no, calling it, not doing that, like the theater, it's, it's amazing. I, I hope that we continue to do things and like collaborate across campuses or something like that.
Media coverage. I know, so we're working, they've got a whole, they've got their flyers, we're working on the media part. This, this event really speaks to the, the wealth and structure we have at the high school, their collaborative nature, just the power of the arts in general, so this is really the aspect of this school.
Yeah, and I'm, and just to brag on our teachers, they probably would brag on themselves, but this is not a theater production that we purchased. They created this. They wrote the script. They put the music to it. Coach, uh, Mr. Whiplinger, usually when you get a, just having that kind of background, when you get that, they tell you what lines to put, where to do all this, and they are doing this themselves. So this is a, um, this is their baby.
Do we have, I know that like kids are crazy about social media. Like, are we talking about this on social media platforms that are?
Yes, we, we pushed it out to Facebook at least once, but we have a, uh, we're gonna continue to ramp that up and, and it certainly will showcase that when the performances are.
Performances later this month, correct?
Twenty eighth and twenty ninth.
And how do you buy tickets?
On My Payments Plus.
Okay. What is the capacity for the, um, like, what do we max out at?
Eight per table.
If you'll give me two minutes, I will.
Michelle, you might.
Would you, Michelle, do you know?
So, um, we're maxing out at two hundred a night because we're trying to socially distance the tables. We have some tables toward the front of the stage. There's tables of eight and further back, there's tables of four. Uh, but we've mapped it and feel like what we've created is kind of the safest slash most effective using space.
I just want to tie that to something else that you mentioned on PR, um, with social media, like, you know, kids aren't ready to social media. They don't stop with social media. Most of the time they're looking at things that are, like, if we can have them start to get their things that benefit the school and advertise these types of events, like maybe have like a social media club that focuses on updating the school's social media platforms and not just Facebook. Like even if we get into Instagram, Twitter and all these different things, I think that would help with the marketing, but also would help students focus on doing things with social media that is more beneficial than some of the stuff that they might be getting into.
We've just recently established our passionate and.
What is that?
Passionate Arts Academy. Um, but we will continue, and I like that idea of getting more students involved, so it'll be great on the.
That's what I was thinking when you, um, mentioned the different pathways for the students, and I was thinking marketing, like there are some, some majors that's sort of just fed by arts, you know, that.
And it's, it's a very important part of art as you embark on that after, you know, you leave school. It's not just being involved in an art show or, like, how do you advertise it? How do you get people interested in this, a big part of it? So I think that would be very helpful. But now I'm very excited about the get a clue dinner. I mean, that's a great career.
And I love just the variety of different arts integration projects that they're doing.
Thanks for sharing it.
Yeah, can, can Michelle, she wanted to share one.
It's just, it's just about the tickets. The only issue that we have is that with My Payments Plus, the only way people can purchase tickets is if they have a student at the school. And so we've run into a little problem there. I just wanted to put that on there.
Do we not have a, uh, like a school Venmo account or something like that that we can manage?
I know we do have a square.
Or a square account?
You have used that in the past.
I mean, it would probably be too late for this event, but maybe for the next event, uh, we'll have something more powerful.
Because, yeah, I'm just worried about, you know, it going over and just sort of have to be through an event, type of event, type of.
Yeah, you do just like an event bike type, uh, uh.
Should we not go there?
Yeah.
I know that whenever we were setting up the, we wanted to provide them online payment options, so we weren't dealing with food use of cash. Um, we, you know, we connected with Bonnie, our accountant, um, to make sure that, as you all are well aware, there are a lot of rules and regs in place on accounts and creating accounts and all that. So, um, My, My Payments Plus was what she suggested, suggested, excuse me, um, just as we had started, but we, we can certainly look into other things, but we, that was what she recommended, so.
Yeah, and I just wanted to share that because as we're going to the community, you just need to keep that in mind, that this is really a show that's catering to like our community. And then, you know, we're inviting people outside of our community, but like I've had people Venmo me money and then I've gone on and purchased it. It just, I wanted, like, we're getting really excited and I love that, but there's not really an avenue right now for just the general community to purchase tickets.
Sure, and if we have a max seating capacity of two hundred, and we're already seeing seating in short supply, something, you don't necessarily need to have another avenue, but.
Right, right.
I guess the point is still well made that as we go, as the thing, please God, we get out of this COVID time, um, and we start having higher capacity of some entertainment in the future.
Yes, we will, we'll work on.
Sure. So this is the first time I've had this kind of information presented to us this way. Are you just wanting us to keep just going through this and just asking the questions?
Well, it's, uh, just strictly for your information. I wanted you to feel like you had a pretty good overview of what's happening in this, in the school this month. I wanted to give all these areas a chance to come brag on the work that they're doing. Um, if this format doesn't necessarily work for you, I'm happy to change it, but I just.
I like it.
Really like to give you as much information as possible.
Is this information available at the end of the meeting? Is it available to?
It's been uploaded to the agenda. Everyone has it. And on the testing, um. It's much better than I expected, yes. We all knew there would be learning loss after last year. We all knew we would be battling that. So, um, is, what is our plan, especially for these kiddos that are coming in? This looks like, I'm sorry, I'm coming to like. Um, you know. are coming in? This looks like, I'm sorry, I'm coming to, like, you know, if this looks like pay one to some of them that we're looking at that are just one grade level below, which is much better than I expected to see. For sure. What are we doing to kind of catch those kiddos? Because it still looks to be a lot.
So rest of those persons referring to the high charts, I know we've got other reports and that, but it's, it's agenda as well. Rest assured, these are very concerning. We all are taking this very seriously. And our first step right now is to really analyze through this testing platform, we're able to get very specific on exactly what these kids are missing, what, what is causing them to sort of chart below. And that, that can get very specific into the fact of what exact question, how that relates to what's being taught. This will also pre-group kids into sort of response to intervention teams. The teachers can help really sort of think about reteaching and grouping kids together in small learning groups. So right now, what we're looking at is we're analyzing this compared to special education services. How does that overlap? We're also in conversation with a group called Ninety Micro Second Group that's going to come in and really train teachers on teaching to really enhance instructional beats. And in a way that they're going to sort of hopefully begin to recapture some of that learning loss and accelerate what they're reading in their fluency.
That was going to be my next question. Do our teachers feel like they have the resources they need to not only catch up, but to cover this year too?
Yeah. Thankfully, Marissa was able to join us during a conversation we had with the Ninety Five Present Group asking the questions that look for knowledge of the campus itself. So we're looking at this, we're really going to dividing kids into small learning groups. We're looking at also having teachers sort of redefine what their instructional day looks like. We do have a loss of learning. This was expected, expected statewide. So we want to, we want to address this immediately and we are going to. And then we will be doing another test at the beginning of next semester, and we're going to be able to chart that data. We're looking at enhancing our dyslexia screen. We're looking at really trying to identify where the gaps are. And this reporting mechanism will do so. Because Heather is in the assistant in data role, this is very beneficial because she's able to pull the records. She's able to give that grade level specific information to the teams of teachers. They're able to look at that in their professional learning communities, their DLCs, identifying exactly what instructional practices are working and what's not working. We're able to look at the curriculum that they're using. Is that working, not working? Do they need hand-on lip, lipulatives? What is it that they need to better serve the kids as our top priorities? We have a few in that orange bracket that is of more concern because they're more than one grade level behind. But again, remember that this isn't coming off of a whole year of COVID and a, almost a semester, not quite a semester, the year prior. So some of these kids in second grade, when they've started their whole education career online, possibly the first year they've gotten back into a building. But we, now we have to readjust instructional practices. We can talk about the other when we get there. Don't let the time digest.
One question I had, I'm curious about, sure, it's happening more on the high school campus than it is online member campus, but there's kind of like touch base on a rut when we're walking in, right? But like the, these TikTok challenges that are popping up that are absolutely ridiculous.
But we have been aware that that is a trend. We get notifications from school and state for the formative education that are pretty good about sort of identifying what's coming down the pipeline. We have seen a little bit of that, but we're also on top of it. So like, they should be sharing really with the high school. They sent notifications out just to kind of heads up. I think one of the messages they sent out maybe on Friday was the message that these parents are going to spend any kind of disciplinary actions from following you. You know, sometimes kids feel like that it's technology, it's instant, and then it's forgotten. They don't realize that some of these occurrences and things that they felt, and even if it's your line, it still exists. So they're working on identifying that with school counselors, meeting with kids in small groups and grade level groups to identify that who recognize these things are happening. And here are the reasons why you should not do that.
Are we taking the light action with any kids that are, you know, the action that they should have been?
We, we have, and the student handbook policy that you guys approved, there are very clear consequences on behavior. And some of those students have gone through that process. We've got, we've got cameras in places. We've got a pretty good student body that recognizes right and wrong. And so those are assistance as well. We've got staff aware. So I think that's the most essential part is awareness, communication, and then we'll handle it as I can.
Something's happening on the elementary campus with that regard?
Not to my knowledge, but again, we'll handle it and see who's up.
So any other comments on attachment form? Just look, it ends on page nineteen.
Um, yes. For the food and nutrition, I am a little concerned because I know how important it is that our free reduced lunch applications are down. Because I know that ultimately will mean, like, title money for us.
Actually, they're up from last year.
Oh, my gosh. Okay, good. But it's still important. No, yeah, we still need as many of those as possible. I think they're up from last year, but they're not where they truly should be.
Yeah. So, I mean, pre-COVID, when, you know, lunch wasn't free, are, is this, what is this number normally flow at? Because I know that affects our Title I money.
Absolutely. It, it was, I think, twenty-five percent prior to COVID.
Okay, so it's about, yeah, okay.
We haven't had this high probably in six or seven.
Okay, so we're good then.
Debbie and Cam really worked hard to get this. Yes, we still have room for improvement, but this is a very big step forward for us. There were social media posts.
There were social media.
There was an email that was sent. You created a flyer, fixed it on an email. I know both of our campus principals and assistant principals are pushing really hard. I know our teachers have been working really hard at open houses and that sort of thing to get those forms out. So it really is, I think, is an education piece. Also, it really benefits our family.
Right.
There are so many things that they can use this form for. I mean, it does benefit our school and it does benefit our students. But Debbie will tell you, at the end of the year, she gets a bunch of requests for letters because we have families that want discounted or free entry into summer camp. And this is one way they can do that. But she can't provide that letter if they haven't filled out the form. So I think we've done a really good job this year. Debbie, thanks to you and your team for getting that information out to our parents. So I think we just need some questions. I think we can help a lot more people, including our school, if we can get that information out.
Anybody questions for attachment form? We move to attachment two, which is personnel changes. It looks like we've got a list of six potential new hires and three resignation tour firms.
So I think that's in this form that hopefully is easy to understand. We had a lot currently that we've had some teachers leave, and we were able to find replacements. The first one, the new hire, is one that you approved a couple months ago, as far as an additional special education teacher for the high school. The rest are replacements based on individuals that have resigned or are no longer with us. We're very thrilled to have these individuals in place and permanent substitutes from that, long-term substitutes from those classrooms. So this is a great move forward. And the principals interviewed, I met all of them at the final stage. They all were incredible, were a great asset to our district.
So one thing I know that's, that's front of mind with parents is background checks on these. And can you, can you shed a little bit of light on the process that these candidates go through?
So before they're even allowed to set up campus, they have to have a background maltreatment check, which is basically to run through the Department of Education, make sure they know occurring any kind of child endangerment, any child legal action taken upon them. And then they have to do a background check, which is run through the law enforcement and the FBI. So you get those clearances, and then they're there to go. Not someone applies to them. That's A law. Yes. And for the most part, they can't have a instructional license, a teaching license, if they have errors on either one of those. So the only situation that you would come into is if you hired a teacher, or hired an individual to be a teacher that did not have certification, which we do on rare occasions. They go through an alternative licensure process, we partner that, but they still have to have those backgrounds. I think the first part toward.
Thank you. On the resignation termination, is there a way that we can add to those resignation combinations that list?
Um, sure.
So one thing, I mean, I'm sure you guys have gotten this, or maybe you're concerned yourself, but I know I've got some messages, messages from parents reaching out. Obviously, we've got some big changes here in the last few months, and changes that personally I believe that I think the board is, is, you know, by body, basically, we're on the right track, that we're raising some things and getting a good momentum. But change, change can be difficult. And so there are, we've had a fair number of people who have resigned and gone. I guess one question that I'm curious about, and I think that parents at home are curious about, is what's the, what's the temperature like amongst existing staff, the morale and stuff? Now, are they doing?
Well, I mean, I can't speak for the staff, but I really rely on the principals to keep a little pulse on their, their campus community. And I feel like that work on a upward momentum. Because if it predicts someone making some decisions on their jobs, like we get anywhere. We are a charter school and have waivers in certain areas that are different than some of our public schools around us. So we offer a little bit of a different pay structure. We offer an at-will status for employment. We offer a little bit of a waiver on class size and things like that. But what we do hope is that when we have staff coming to us, they have the will, their passion, that they want to be here for a specific reason. And they're bringing forth their excellence, and we want that excellence. So my goal is not to just hire someone, but hire the right individuals. The individuals that left, like, for various reasons. The timing is not ideal, but I hope we can, we've got incredible teachers in place. We've got great things happening in the classroom. I feel very positive that we're moving in in this great direction. These are all replacements other than the one that you already moved around. The only new position that is to be considered is the part-time bus driver. And that was on the transportation side. We can talk about that a little bit later on.
It was, is it later in the agenda? Part of the?
Very, oh, yeah, I jumped ahead. He did business. We can talk about that.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions or comments regarding attachment number two? If not, we will go ahead and move on to our next section, which is comments from the public. Mr. Victor, we have.
First in style, please, the student, which is not on line, so.
What's her name's? I didn't send it to me, so I can look it up, too. She's being annoying, too. Alexis Tucker. Alexis Tucker in the room today. And she's not online?
Yeah.
Okay. We have no comments from the public. Let's see. High School Recognition. Rachel Parker, is she here with us?
She is not here tonight?
Are you?
But I have that. Yes, I.
Take that, nurse, that?
I am stepping into some pretty big shoes lately. Here. So our Staff Member of the Month, and again, these are voted on by students and students and stakeholders, teacher of the month is Mrs. Merl. And then our Students of the Month are Katie Rolsky, Tina Hernandez, and Catherine Ragan.
Let's get a little. Yeah, absolutely. Okay, next item we have, I'm sorry.
The teacher there, if you.
Next item we have is Student Council Report. Robbie Little, Robbie's here, right?
Oh, right here. Just want to give a little bit of an update.
Real quick, is he close enough to the mic?
Yeah, you might want to come just a little closer.
Thank you.
Want to go on the camera?
Oh, yeah, yeah, you're fine.
Just want to give an update about some Halloween events that's going's running. We have a haunted house and a movie night. That'll be happening on the thirtieth. It will, haunted house costs five dollars and movie night costs three dollars. There's like the comp moment. You buy a ticket for ten dollars to go to vote. The day of winter night is organized, it's been organized so that they can, um, work really well together and hopefully give us students a digest, like, Halloween event, so they can tour that time. I'd also like to give, like, a moment to say thank you to Alex Nagle and Anna Caseman. They've both been working on respective projects, the haunted house being Alex's and a movie night being Anna's. And they have been working, choosing some students to get all together. There's been relatively minimal teacher involvement. This is all students working. They have been through Kobe Spence's work to plan out, make sure I can run as well. I could say that they have just done that this time. Next, I'd like to say that Principal Advisory Council has been created and is now being chaired by Alex Nagle. I believe he's in the process of setting up meet times so they can be bi-weekly. So I'm just happy to see that's happening. On a less, like, happy note, kind of what was expressed earlier, like, in the parents saying, oh, you're saying this is spelled in the student body. They, they always see the more means where they're going. So they are kind of concerned. I can sure this will subside once we get past walking break and see all this new staff coming. I'm really excited for that. At the moment, a lot of students are pretty worried about students. Hopefully things happen. The next, I'd like to say that the student body is extremely happy with one of our recent events. This event was put on by Math Club. This was, it was run by Ms. Garcia and Ms. Leach and this group of just fabulous students. I would love to name them each, however, I'm fearful of forgetting the names of what it was about. Of course, they have just fabulous teams, students. They've been amazing. They've been one of the best events I have ever seen. Hispanic heritage much. They did absolutely wonderful job. It was beautiful.
I heard this, I heard it was great.
Congratulations. It was great.
I had nothing to do about this. It's all Math Club. It's just their event.
Good job, Math Club.
It's all Math Club.
Okay, thank you very much.
Is there a way that we can be, be more aware of some of these events? I would have loved to. Okay, good. Yes. Our goal is to over-inform United, not relax. So yes.
Uh, next item we have is AAA Elementary and High School AADE report cards, which are attachment three and.
So this is the, this is the state report card that has not been published yet that I'm giving to the insider work on, twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one scores. So these are a year behind. So this is the most recent with elementary. Elementary had a two-point-four-nine gain, which is really great, all things considered. So these students took these tests in the midst of, in last year.
Real quick, I'm sorry, where's the two-point order game?
So if you will look, I put them in six-point order. So we're starting at twenty-sixteen, which is when the state moved to this reporting.
Oh, I see. I'm sorry.
And then the next, the reason there's not a letter grain on there is it's still in the edit state. You have nothing else to edit. So this will be published very soon for the general public. So elementary was up two-point-four-nine, which is good. We also had a decrease, I'm trying to put it together in a way that you would see sort of the progression. We also had a one-point-three-five decrease. We also had a 1.35 decrease in spend. So that doesn't, not necessarily is a correlation why we increased, but that's just one element of that. Again, these, this republic school rating system is based on a lot of different indicators, which we're really moving forward, trying to make sure that we address every single one. It's a culmination score that helps us get to where we are. But this will be public knowledge. The, it's kind of hard to see, the scoring system is different for high school and elementary. So it's not the same numbers that equate to the same letter score. So if you would see right beside kind of where the rating scale is to the right of the letter grade, this is the elementary scale, which is different than the high school. The high school goes into some other indicators such as graduation cohort, and some other sort of high school campus-related moments. This is, this measures student growth, it measures campus, it measures attendance, it measures how we're addressing our minority population, our disadvantaged learners, all of that. The, the high school took a 0.835 drop. In fact, you will also see that they have a 1.71 increase in spend and a 107% student gap increase from the last time that they went tested. 1920 was a gap during the term of my Department of Ed, that we weren't going to test anything because the way it fit in, that was right when testing was about to happen. So they gave us the grace of that year. So some of the initial, obviously, we want to remain A, we want to be A at both campuses. So we're really focusing on, on response intervention, RTI for the high school. We're also looking at recognizing that some of these grades reflect students coming from the elementary that were not strong in some of those early skills that were identified to the eye rate. But they weren't strong in reading and writing and math. They eventually transcend to the high school, and that just exacerbates that gap. So by hitting it early in elementary, we almost do a double, double charge for both campuses.
So are these grades comprised solely of test scores, or are there other factors that contribute?
There are other factors, so there's lots of different, so it's student growth, individuals' student growth, attendance, it's graduation cohort, so that means like if a student comes in traditionally in ninth grade, we give a certain percentage of points if they continue on through the 12th grade, if they remain in their cohort. And that is just, that's just.
So student retention, so?
Yes. If we lose students because they move and we're not able to identify where they are, that puts poorly on us, so we have to do our diligence on exactly where students are. There's a, there's a, there's a method to that, I mean, they want to make sure all students are held in the cohort and no one is on false reports. So we have to ensure that we're doing our diligence with that. But there are other things that we can do, and we're going to work on that. One of the things is, I've been tracking a lot really heavily, is attendance. And so that's why Dr. Appleton is really focused on these tools, sending out those attendance letters, letting parents know when their students have been absent, because that counts against us. When students don't take the standardized testing test, that counts against us. We don't have a doctor's note to excuse them, that counts against us. So a lot of these things, we just have to do a bit of diligence on tracking.
So where do seventh and eighth graders go? Are they in elementary or are they in high school?
That's a very good point, and at this point, they would all, that's a very good point. I am not sure, I don't see a junior high page, so.
On the. Elementary says K through eight.
Yeah, so they're, so they call them elementary.
Whoa. Actually, it says K through eight. Where there are changes, and I know this just from opening a new school, a new LEA, that takes, it's a two-year process for that to flesh out. Because some of that.
When you move them to the high school, is that?
Yeah, so that, so that, so when you adjust that LEA, that building code and where those kids are, that growth over time component and model, it just, it just takes a little bit of time for that to flesh out.
Yeah, but 2018 shows a change from ninth to 12th.
So we get a mix, which is also maybe an, you know, a lot of traffic. Again, this is not shocking, I mean, it's a state, expectations for sports to drop further. It's just the realities of what we're dealing with. So we are working really hard to make sure we address that also, you know, and we're clear where we are.
Yes, I'm sorry, it's a concern, but it's also an opportunity.
Absolutely.
It's very good to understand where you are and say, okay, well, now we, now we know exactly where we need to improve, and it gives you guys some targets to focus on, so I, I think it's reasonable to expect that we can see some improvement.
And the work at the high school and elementary, but specifically the high school that are on the response intervention, the RTI, is really coming forward as far as that advisory time. And they're going to extend that out of the local campus as well. So really kind of have students advocate for going to where they know they need assistance, but then also take more of a directed approach and guidance to what they need to do. And so it's just one step, but they're working on individualizing what they want.
I was just wondering, what's our graduate?
Come on, Ray. This doesn't have it on there, but I can show off, but there, each individual thing has got lots of different spreadsheets that go with it. When it comes to finalized, I'll submit a full report to you guys. And I can also go back and submit the 16, if you want, all that together. But I didn't want to get too in the weeds with it, knowing that it's definitely a question absolutely terrifying.
Any other questions or comments from the boardroom? Okay, if not, we will move on to our next agenda item, which is number nine, the consent agenda. So first, we need to take a look at the minutes, if you guys haven't reviewed them already, from the September 2021 meeting, which is attachment number five. I believe there are five pages there. I repeat this prior to getting to come in here. Any questions about that? August financials. Do we have a chance to sit down as the finance committee this month, or this last month?
So I don't think it's been called, but my proposal is to move to like three times a year. I think it can be three times a year, where we're using those sessions more as a planning session, a goal setting session, each of the thirty, each of the time, two or three times, we'll have a different goal, so one time we'll be looking at the next year's budget. Bonnie does a really good, and this is my opinion, for discussion here, so you guys let me know. Bonnie does a really good job of giving our financials done and to a, in a timely manner. So we have time to review those after her or Dr. Robert's questions, but we also have time here to bring those questions and to review them. I have not seen any areas for concern. So I think if we're all reviewing those financials every month and we're not having questions, you know, there's not a lot of reason to have finances that need to work every single month. Because there's not work to be done. There is a lot of work to be done two or three times a year where we're setting the budget for the next year, we're setting goals, we're looking at things like funding. I think, you know, once a year, we should be reviewing our policies as far as our financial policies go. Do we need to add anything to that as we grow, as we bring, as we add new activities or whatever? Do we have the proper policies in place? So I think that there's a need for a work session to review our policies, and then a work session to review our budget. But as far as you said before, there's not a lot of need for that because there aren't major, I mean, there aren't any areas of concern in my opinion right now, but there certainly aren't major areas of concern. The previous meeting that we had, we already talked about. And really, the only concern I had was the 7,000 funds, the funding that's sitting out there that, for all of our activities. And my concern was, do we know what that, do we know what they are? What is that money sitting there for? Has it been sitting there for five years? Does it have a plan? Is somebody watching it? Is somebody reviewing it? So all of those questions have been answered. Dr. Roberts has sat down with Bonnie and all of the proper people that own those funds. They have a process in place for reviewing them, for using them, for making sure that, we know what we're bringing in and what's going out, and that we're not spending more than we should in those activity funds. So in my opinion, we don't really have a need for every month. Do you guys see a need?
I personally don't have a problem with that. So your suggestion is we're going to a quarterly minus summer type of?
So the next one would be in January. And it would have, you know, kind of an agenda as well as just the third goal that's for that part session, and it would be a work session.
Any additional thoughts from the board?
It's not in our policy that we have to have that meeting, so.
Okay, I don't believe any of that.
I just want to interject something for clarification. These are the September financials.
Sorry, Bonnie, did I say October?
No, I think it says August on the, on the agenda. It's actually the September financials, the month we just finished.
You're right, there is a typo on the agenda, but it is September. Okay, so yeah, we don't need anything for that. Last item in the consent agenda was the enrollment report, which is attachment number seven. I had a chance to review this as well, and I don't have any questions, anything from the rest of the board? You guys?
Yeah, why did we lose 10 students?
Which grade on first, where are you looking?
11th.
The 11th grade?
Was there a grade lost? I'm sorry.
We didn't really lose 10 students. That was from the lottery to present.
Oh, the initial, okay, sorry, that's my fault. I was looking at it wrong, I thought this was like a monthly, I was like, that's a lot of students.
That's just that initial, we proved that they're not. So when Dr. Roberts says we have to know where students go, once we have proved where a student is, then we can take them off of our focus, especially, and that's, that's just that urging process that happens.
Here, we got a 49, yeah.
What is our capacity?
1225.
1225 for.
Any other questions or comments about the enrollment report? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. We have first, all in favor?
I agree.
Any opposed? Motion carries, did you get the first and second, Debbie?
I did, thank you.
Okay, moving on to item number 10, new business. First is item A, Act 1120, which is attachment eight.
Well, this is a, this is a state requirement that we notify the Department of Education. We've had a 5% increase or decrease in salary from here to here. And have, based on increases, we don't give decreases. So this is just indications, this is an example of the way we're setting up education. We've got Act 1120.
This is just for our information.
Just for information. And then the following pages discuss the increases that our Department of Ed.
So when, when this is sent to the Department of Education, it has to have that initial attachment with it?
It does.
With everybody or just the increases?
We usually just send the whole thing, but they are only looking at the increases or decreases. We have decreases if that's employment is no longer active. So it's individualized. What they're, what they're trying to oversee, because we, our salaries are basically federal funding, state funding, is that we are, we are consistent in a process of salary utilization. This was a legislative act based on our ability to see what districts are doing with their salaries.
Any questions or comments?
So this is just to approve the format of the letter and the attachment, or what?
Yes.
Do you need our version on this, or is this just FYI?
This is just FYI.
Okay, if there's no comments, we will move to item B, or 10B, which is the archery presentation, referred to as attachment nine.
Jeff, I wanted to let you know that our enrollment is the same as it was in August, 103 for that grade.
Oh, okay.
So we didn't really, we have not lost any since the beginning of school.
All right, good evening, Gordon, glad that we're here. And we have two sports to present to you tonight. Coach Green is here to present the archery, and then following that, I will present the 712 cheerleading.
So our archery program competes in the National Archery in the Schools Program, which is run by the Arkansas Game and Fish. We currently have three teams, 16 members each team. Fourth and fifth make up the elementary, sixth through eighth make up the middle school, ninth through 12th make up the high school. What makes our sport unique is you have to have at least four of each gender on the team. So we have a male and female competing together. We, our season consists of about three to four tournaments. We have one at home and the rest are on the road. No school we missed, except if middle school and elementary make state tournament, they will miss a Friday to go to hot springs. All the high school tournaments are on a Saturday, though. Most of the financials are provided by the parents, there's a $50 activity fee that basically covers T-shirt, this normal wear and tear that we had to prepare from the year before, placing targets, arrows, entry fees, stuff like that. We do occasionally get grants, there is the Preservation Act with the Game and Fish, which is the fine money from different counties. We share that with the other archery programs in Benton County, though, so we're not promised that every year. And I'm also going to work on one from the NRA this year.
Questions? Have you guys had a chance for you to do the initial question?
Are there two locations for practice?
Yes, so, I'll address that. Locations?
Yeah, I can talk about that. Because our gym is packed with other activities going on, we have secured the armory that's located First Street. And we have signed, I don't want to, 25 page.
A very long, very long.
Agreement, no cost to the team, no, no cost to the players. Only one team will practice at a time, and Coach Green will supervise all of the kids. We don't turn it over to other parents or other coaches. Coach Green will be there with, with each group. Now, we're working out the transportation details on that, but a lot of that will depend on, you know, the, who's on the team, and what their parents want to do. And it will be before school and after school.
The seven, seven, eight?
Seven, eight.
Night and day.
Just in the morning, yeah.
We did the practice there in the past, right?
We did a couple of years ago. They've been gracious to let us do it for free, so.
And it's a good place.
It's about a mile away.
And I'll.
Kind of between the campuses.
The deal about going back and forth is the targets. We don't want to move those, we're going to move them twice, once, two there, and then come, we'll move them back. Once basketball season is over, well, then we'll find the pickups and trucks and trailers and, and bring them back over, and that's when the tournaments will start.
Beginning of March, right?
Is the armory available, like, throughout the year?
We've got it until early March.
Until this year, so if we decide to do it this year again, we have to go back and talk to them.
We'll have to ask again, yes.
Okay, so I don't have any other questions? I believe last week, or last month, we voted on, we did the group, not a group. So I'll take, entertain more to the sports application. So I got first, Jose Adrian. So I got first, we'll say Adrian, this is second, I'll say Marissa. Uh, Marissa will be second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next we have the cheer presentation.
Okay, I, I will present this. Kind of trying to find a spot right here, you know?
Oh, you are.
Well, I need something to, to hang on to, so I'll, I'll do my best.
Can we run one of these library bookcases?
There's a counter.
Well, I'm presenting the request for a cheerleading squad made up of seven to twelve, seventh through twelfth grade of students. Boy, male and female. Boys and girls just doesn't sound right for high school, so male and female. Um, as a sideline cheer pep squad. We, Crystal Lewis has agreed to be the coach. Many of you know Crystal. She's a second grade teacher, has been a fifth grade science teacher, has been, and she jumped in last year and did her virtual student, so did a great job. But wherever you put her, she's going to do a good job. Her background is in dance, gymnastics, cheer, both at the high school and with the U of A. And she is going through the training now through the Arkansas Activities Association. The benefits, seven, twelve, non-competitive cheer pep squad provides an additional option for students to display their talents, support a positive school culture, involving in community outreach through service projects. It builds leadership skills along with working as a team. Uh, the season is a fall/winter and we're talking about six to ten games. We are only talking about home games. The association it falls under, falls under the Arkansas Activities Association because they're going to be on the sideline. If you have just a pep squad or whatever, you can put them in the bleacher and they can just be a school club. Once they move to the sideline, they fall under the Arkansas Activities Association. Loss of instruction time, which is nine because we'll not travel to away games. And travel radius, again, only home games. We're looking at sixteen to twenty on the, on the squad. Now, there is a limit of, of the, of the number of cheerleaders you can put on the floor. So, you know, we may have sixteen or seventeen, seventeen, but only twelve will be on the floor to cheer and that will, that will involve a rotation. Um, we have cheerleaders, like I said, seven through twelve, and they will cheer for junior high games and senior high games. Now, if we have a four game night, they'll not cheer for all four. But they're going to rotate back and forth, do some junior high games, some senior high games. The tryout, um, we're, you know, talking about how it's going to be advertised, monitored, evaluated. Uh, we're talking about next year. Uh, it'll, we'll advertise it through the school's social media channels, flyers, general announcements. Um, practice, a week of practice followed by the tryouts will take place in, in the spring. Students will be selected to cheer or supporting through a pep squad. I have the vision, but sometimes my vision gets blurred every once in a while, of having a group of cheerleaders and a pep squad that's fluid. Meaning, if we have thirty total that we're able to, either in the stands as a pep squad or on the floor as cheerleaders. Now, I know if we, if we have thirty, all thirty wouldn't be, but maybe we would have twenty. Ten of them, they just want to sit in the bleachers and cheer. Let, you know, we can do that. But then have twenty that are wanting to sideline cheer, but then we'll have eight that will sit in the bleachers with the pep squad that night. So, now the, the logistics of that is practice time. And when you get into stunts and routines and all, we have to work, work through that. So I really don't know if that's possible. I would like for it to be because it's just getting more girl, more students on the, on the floor. And we can come back to all these questions. Practice time is after school, less than five hours a week. Uh, practice will be on, on our campus unless we can find a safe place that does not cost, cost us anything. Uh, somewhere else, but we'll practice on campus and we'll practice here on the K six campus. Um, the cheerleaders will be bussed over, just like we'll bring, we bring the basketball players over from the high school. Coach Red will just bring the cheerleaders over on days that they have practice and then parents can pick them up from here. And, you know, even this library is a good place to practice certain things of cheerleading. So we have, we have running. Funds are generated through sponsors, donations, fees and fundraisers. Um, cost of the sport, we're, I, we're looking at about two hundred and fifty dollars total per, per student. And, um, we will charge a, you know, an activity fee for that of like fifty dollars. But then we'll also provide a, a way that someone else could pay for someone's, um, activity fee privately. And I will be the only one that will know, will create a Google form or some type of forum that the money's coming in and the person will say, hey David, just, we have a, an athlete that cannot afford, well then here it is. And we use, uh, we use the Booster Club Venmo because that's running to the Booster Club account where all of the activity and athletic money is housed. It's under the Arkansas Arts Academy Foundation, five oh one C three, I believe. Um, transportation, um, parents, fiscals. Uh, we're, we will always try to have fiscals available for free in the early fall, August or September. And fiscals are good for twelve to fifteen months according to Arkansas Activities Association. Grades, missing assignments will be monitored by the coaches, myself and admin. And on the last page, we talked about volunteers and yes, volunteers will be used. But all volunteers will be vetted before any contact with squad members. We will know their background before they do. Modeling, our sportsmanship is best modeled, modeling is the best approach to establishing sportsmanship in our, in our members. Clear, established, attainable expectation conveyed on.
Any questions or comments?
Um, you mentioned games?
You're just talking basketball games here?
We are talking basketball games. In the future, we might talk soccer, but I think this year we need to just focus on basketball where it's dry. You know, you can get outside, then, you know, that's really a whole. It's, it's just different when you're talking about cheering outside as inside. So this year, we're just talking about sideline cheer for home basketball.
Along with sideline, David, my question was about, I keep hearing the word stunt. And my impression of sideline cheer was not that they would be doing stunts.
There are certain lists that junior high cheerleaders can do during a game. Well, during a timeout or a halftime on the floor. But those lists will not take place until they are repeated over and over and over on mats.
So my concern is we don't have a place for them to do that yet.
We have mats that we can roll out and they can do those stunts on.
So we have the mats already?
Yes, they are in the gym and Coach Fred has already given me a head, or a thumbs up on that. They can be used.
Do we have a release of liability from the parents?
When they, you're going to approve one later. We talked about it at the last meeting. We made some corrections to, um, it was too wordy. Corrections have been made and it's on the agenda, so, yes.
Everybody that wants to join, um, any sport?
Yes.
So, um, I, the cheerleaders will only receive their coaching and our practices will be here on campus, right?
Yes. Um, I mean, if you want to open that as far as infinity, no. Now, will some of our girls go to infinity and practice on their own and get better tumbling? Absolutely, just like Fred wants his basketball players to go down the rack and work on their moves. You know, work on their conditioning, um, yes. He does not want six of his players going down to the rack and letting someone else coach them.
So, so this team specifically will only, right now, you know, right this year, will only practice off?
This, the team will.
And will not compete against other schools?
We will not.
That's the, that's the biggest difference between last month's presentation and today's.
Yes, and let me, let me follow up with just a quick. Five, six years ago, basketball was on this campus, grade six, seven and eight. Did not play in the triple A, they played in the Ozark League and did fine. Then we added ninth grade, dropped sixth grade, moved into the Arkansas Activity Association. Okay, and then, you know, competed against other schools. Then we went to a senior high because our players were getting older. We went to a senior high and we played a junior varsity schedule for a year. Which means you can play the other teams, but you're playing, you know, they're tenth graders or you're playing their junior varsity. You do not compete for a conference tournament. You don't go to the state tournament. And then the first year that we moved into varsity play with our senior boys, which was last year, we, we ended up third in our conference and made it to the state tournament. So I think there's a progression that we need to go through, we need to grow into, and I think we can.
So as part of that, I have one more question about this, and that is that none of our other teams have tryouts. But we're saying our kids do have to try out for this. We're not going to take all interest.
Archery has tryouts, so does basketball.
Archery does have tryout. Basketball does not yet because of numbers, okay?
If we had twenty-two kids coming out for the ninth grade basketball team, you're not going to keep both of them?
We, right, and we cannot, we cannot transport all twenty-two. Um, nice reason I.
So is that why we're having tryouts here is a, is a?
Yes, and that's, but that's also the reason why I, I have this vision in my mind about that fluid piece, that they can be both pep squad and a cheerleader. I don't know if that works, but I'm going to think about it over the next few months before we hit spring to decide. You know, how could that work for us, that we could end up with fifty men and, fifty male and female coming out for cheer and, you know, we're all supporting each other, so.
Let's just make sure that we're real clear to our parents upfront about what it is.
Yes.
Like, if we're going to cut it off at whatever number.
Yep, it has to be very clear. Outside judges will come in, do the evaluation. Um, and recommendations will be sent out to teachers to get the, you know, the, um, academic and conduct.
Any other questions or comments on this one from the board?
I know that we have to.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much.
Just a couple more items. Um, October the eighteenth is our tip-off for our basketball season here. Uh, Future School out of Fort Smith.
That's which team?
Senior girls and boys, right? Yes, senior girls and boys. They finished installing the Pixelot camera in the gym today at about two thirty or three. And with that, we can sell basically, it's a membership for ten dollars a month that parents can watch our basketball games. We get, yes, we do. We get, I think, I think, I think twenty percent. Um, I think we get twenty percent of that, but where we do get some money, if we want to advertise, we get to keep all of that.
And this is being streamed on the?
It will be streamed. And, but parents will have to buy a membership. It's ten dollars a month, seven dollars for a year. And we'll get more information out on that because it was just installed today and they were doing the last, um, kind of check and we'll get information tomorrow. But we have to, we have to broadcast every basketball game. That's our only requirement. And it did not cost us anything, so everything is private.
Do we have any notification that has to be posted at the gym during those games to let the public know that there is an agenda, they are being broadcasted over the internet?
I don't think you do, um, because I will check. And about three hundred schools throughout the state has this system. Um, if you're a member, you can watch any of the other schools if you pay your ten dollars a month. The, the good thing about this also is Emily can tell you that on Rise and Shine, parents can watch it for free. It's just broadcast out there. I don't know the logistics of it as far as how you log into it, but we'll get that information. But they do not have to be a, a member to get school events.
I'm not concerned about the people that are going to purchase this or I'm concerned about the people that are walking into the gym and next thing they know, somebody pulled a video or picture of them off the internet. And it might, so I would, I would just check. I don't think that we have to like have people that are walking in sign a receipt, just letting them know, hey, by walking into the gym during this time, you are going to be, like this game's being broadcast.
Right, the other item on this, we cannot allow anyone else to use our internet to record a game. So that's one agreement, but anyway, but yes, I will, I will do on, I'll check on that.
This may be a Victor question. Um, you said Rise and Shine and the parents don't have to pay for that. Does that mean that anybody out there can log in and watch our Rise and Shine? I'm a little concerned about that.
Sorry about that. Login would be free. Did I hear you correctly with that?
Right, but I think we would send out the link.
It would be a public broadcast.
The only thing to make sure is that it's not shared on Facebook or anything like that too, whatever.
I mean, we were broadcasting last time before, it was on our public YouTube channel, so.
Oh, okay.
This may give us actually.
Uh, the last thing is, as you drove in, you saw two. Uh, the last thing is, as you drove in, you saw two new buses. Those are the activity buses and, um.
Can we paint our buses green with our logo on it?
No, you want to tell them why we can't?
I don't, I, I'm not going to go there, so.
This was part of the transportation update, this district update with buses. The white buses, they are getting a new logo on it, they just haven't been.
Are they going to say white?
They don't say white, but they are getting a logo on it.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for that. We're going to appear the cheer vote. So, item 10D, approving a part-time bus driver, uh, which is, uh, page 17 of attachment number one. Uh, let's see, we're being asked for approval to hire a part-time bus driver. We have two full-time drivers and one part-time driver currently. Jay Hoyt is a full-time maintenance and assisting. With full-time maintenance worker assisting, covering our bus routes daily due to national bus driver shortage. Am I reading this correctly? So that's the ask, if we would allow him to cover people who are doing that part-time bus driver?
So we've never been informed right now with just the number that we have on the December 2006. And we're really hurting the driver. Bus drivers are on a shortage everywhere. We're really excited about it.
I heard Coach Fred wants to drive our morning routes, too.
One question on this, uh, if I'm reading this correctly, he's a full-time maintenance guy right now?
That's Mr. Jay, yeah. And he's been told part-time to drive around the whole route.
So is this, this is an application for a, a different person altogether who wants to cover part-time?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, I was, okay, I wanted to clarify, we weren't, we weren't putting Jay into overtime or anything?
No, we'll put Jay back into doing his maintenance and then only add new difference in schedule.
Any questions?
Richard. My child to us.
Yes. Every day, yeah, one day she was supposed to come at 8 o'clock, she was like, oh.
Okay, okay, is there any questions on the motion to approve, uh, the part-time bus driver position? First. In a second.
Okay.
We'll give it to Duffy. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, last item on our new business is the release of liability for minor participants, which is attachment number 11, which is a separate document, right? Think of it sent out to us individually.
So as you remember, we, we looked at this last time and we made some corrections or edits to it and made it more personal to the school and so I have a.
I have either kind of that. Any further? Yeah, I had a chance to review it earlier, I did not see any issues with it at all. It's much more compact and, uh, although that includes COVID, I think.
So I'll make a motion to.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That completes the, uh, new business for, for the day. Uh, do we have any discussion of items since the publication of the agenda? Any business? No. Okay, uh, do we have any reason to adjourn to executive session?
I have one small issue, I should take my time off, I promise.
So can I give a motion to move into executive session?
Don't move.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let's go to executive session. Where are we headed? I don't think I've ever been in a military school before.
We're in a hallway. We didn't hear last time, I think we got cheered.
I'm going to go eat myself.
That's true. Good luck.
The second on the.
I don't know, I appreciate that or?
See, you're racist. Yeah, I think the worst is that second.
She did now, okay.
Good job, Rodney, or, good job. It was just.
Yeah, I'd say the job was good.
Doing it down, you know, there. She's just. Not because she's just tired. I'm sorry.